Before this bunch gets quiet, balala-la-la. Good evening, Merry Christmas, and welcome to the December 12th, 2024 meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. If everyone would stand with us, please, our Commission Chaplain Romel McMurray will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Commissioner McMurray.
Oh, excuse me. Good evening, everyone. As we partake in this holiday season, let us be reminded of those that are not able to celebrate with those, so let us keep those in our prayer, those individuals. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, the one who gives us life and hope, we thank you for this wonderful time of the year. I ask that you let us stop and pause to make it a worshipful time of year as well, for we know this is a season of joy, peace, and most importantly, the celebration of the birth of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Let us be reminded that he is the reason for the season. Our past experiences don't have to dictate our future expectations. So whatever we're waiting for, praying for, or hoping for, his birth is evidence that God keeps his promises. I ask that you continue to heal the sick and those recovering from any life challenges, for we know that you are a faithful and righteous God. I ask that you light our path as a county commission body and give us clarity on how you want us to lead and to live. And I ask that you continue to provide us with good health and strength, but most importantly, I ask that you give the good health and strength to our family members as well. For we know that 2024 has been a year of some ups and downs, but we know that you'll never leave us and that you'll never forsake us. We thank you, Lord, for all of our county employees, our first responders, and our staff. May they all have a blessed holiday season along with their loved ones. Comfort those that may not have anyone to share this holiday season with, for we know that you are our refuge. We give you all the honor, the glory, and the praise. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Three points, ours, we build a blue, out of heat and strong, and ever true, and there's a pride and love, and a smooth and bright intensity.
Thank you. You may be seated. This time I'll call on our Rutherford County Clerk Lisa Crowell to call the roll. Lisa?
Mr. Oliver?
Present.
Mr. Piercey?
Here.
Here.
Mr. P?
Here.
Mr. Davidson?
Here.
Mr. Beverly?
Here.
Mr. Kush?
Present.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. James?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Anthony Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Paul Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Irvin?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Dodd?
Here.
Chairman Phillips?
Present.
Mr. McAdoo?
Here.
Mr. McMurray?
Here.
Mr. Gooch?
Here.
Mr. Shurigno?
Yeah.
Have a quorum, 21 present.
Thank you, Lisa. This time I'll call on our Chairman Pro Tem Trey Gooch for the reading of our November 14th meeting minutes. We have a motion and a second to approve our November 14th meeting minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item E, resolution of recognition for Habitat for Humanity. Call on Commissioner Robert P.
Someone asked why I got the honor of reading this, and it happens at this 200th home we're speaking of. He's built in my district over off Twin Oak Drive. Resolution of recognition, Rutherford County Habitat for Humanity's 200th house. Whereas the Rutherford County Area Habitat for Humanity is a nonprofit, non-denominational Christian housing ministry that seeks to bring people together to build homes, communities, and hope. This is done through building quality, energy-efficient, affordable houses while partnering alongside working families. And whereas the homes are built by the Rutherford County Area Habitat for Humanity construction staff, future homeowners, and community volunteers. Once the home is completed, it is sold to the family at no profit with an affordable monthly mortgage. Over 100 volunteers from Nissan and the community helped in building of the home at Habitat's Legacy Point in Murfreesboro. And whereas it is appropriate at this time to recognize the value and importance of Rutherford County Habitat for Humanity's 200th house, now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners and the county mayor that we hereby recognize and extend this resolution of recognition to the Rutherford County Area Habitat for Humanity and the construction of our 200th house, resolved this 12th day of December, 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution of recognition for Habitat for Humanity. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, motion to approve carries. Thank you.
I will mention that the dedication for this home will be December the 19th at 9:45 at Legacy Point, which is over on Twin Oak Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Item F, resolution of recognition for John Black, Cologne Commissioner Jonathan Beverley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to invite John and his wife, if you would like to come up. And then any other commissioner that's come to know John over the years and his accomplishments at the airport, if you'd like to come on up as well. He's contributed greatly to the Rutherford County area and Smyrna area. Hey, you're welcome to.
John knows I love you.
Yeah, okay. It's a, yeah. It's a point of privilege. I want to brag on John. Back in 2017, he got me plugged in with the Rotary Club in Smyrna, and it's been a great opportunity. John and I's daughter went to school together, and it's known you for quite a while. I'm very proud of you, proud to call you a mentor. But a resolution of recognition honoring John Black. Whereas John Black has served with the exceptional dedication and leadership of the Smyrna-Rutherford County Airport Authority in overseeing unprecedented growth and development, marking it as one of the premier airports in the United States of America. And whereas John, under his leadership partnerships, has been strengthening with businesses, local governments, aviation organizations that position the airport as an important hub for industry, commerce, aviation achievement, and more. And whereas John Black began his career with the airport in 1991, since then has brought over $240 million into the airport for commerce development, along with winning numerous awards, including Airport of the Year twice for the state of Tennessee. And whereas John has received countless accolades within his industry that recognize his superb contributions to our community, including Airport Manager of the Year, FAA Southern Region, Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce Businessperson of the Year, Career Contribution to Aviation Award of Excellence from the Tennessee Division of Aeronautics, and National Air Transportation Executive Partnership Award in 2022. And whereas John remains dedicated to his community as a whole by serving as past president of Smyrna Rotary, adjunct faculty member at MTSU's Aerospace Graduate Program, past board member of Stonecrest Medical Center, past president of Arnold Community Council, and past board member of the Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce, and graduate leadership of Rutherford and Leadership Middle Tennessee, Scout Master of Boy Scout Troop 374 and Venturing Troop 374. And now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners and Mayor Joe S. Carr, on this 12th day of December, 2024, do hereby recognize and thank John Black for his enduring contributions over the last 33 years to Rutherford County and wish him well in his retirement. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to John Black as a token of our esteem and recognition of his legacy at the Smyrna-Rutherford County Airport. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution and recognition of Mr. Black. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can't pass up a microphone. I want to say thank you to all of you, because I know it's a tough job. And really, back to 1991, when we transferred the airport from the Metropolitan Nashville Airport Authority, it was people that sat in your chairs that made that happen. And I was given the opportunity back in 1991 by the father of our sheriff, Mr. Steve Fitzhugh. And I'll never forget that opportunity that carried me along this journey for 33 years. And it's been a lot of fun, and the opportunity does not stop here. We've got fine people to fill in behind me, and it's going to keep on going. It's one of the best assets we have in Rutherford County. So I thank you very much, and thank you for what you do, and happy holidays.
Thank you, John, for your contribution to our community. I know you're looking forward to retirement. It's a good thing. We've had three people sign up for public comments. Matt Fee, his topic is the proposed pay increase. Mr. Fee? I'll remind you, as you're on your way up, you have three minutes. There's a timer on the podium that will count you down.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here tonight to discuss the proposed 4% pay increase for our county employees. In years past, I managed a warehouse here in Rutherford County and faced a similar issue with low starting pay, where we had to hire workers with little to no experience and train them. Once trained, many left for higher-paying jobs doing similar work elsewhere. This experience gives me insight into the challenge this body faces today with high turnover and unfilled positions. I appreciate Commissioner Beverley's proposal for an 8% pay increase he presented at Public Safety and was disappointed when it failed. While the 4% increase proposed tonight may not be enough, it is a step in the right direction, especially with looming tariffs likely to raise the cost of living for all of us. However, more labor and higher pay alone won't solve the problem. We need to think beyond these measures. I strongly urge this body to review policies and procedures. Instead of calling for deeper dives with no follow-through, I suggest forming an ad hoc committee that will actively examine these issues and propose actionable recommendations. Government inefficiency is often criticized, but unlike those with zero experience at the national level, we should lean on our highly skilled civil servants. They are well-positioned to provide guidance on reducing turnover, growing capabilities, and fostering a work environment that meets the demands of our growing community. I also want to address the inevitable argument regarding the use of one-time versus recurring funds for this pay increase. I'd like to direct you to the Fund Condition Report, a document buried deep within the materials for the Budget and Finance Committee. On the final page of that report, you'll find the Statement of Proposed Operations. It's updated monthly. As of the end of November, the estimated unassigned fund balance for the General Fund is $115.6 million, approximately 66% of expenditures. This far exceeds the 30% threshold required to maintain our AAA bond rating. To put it plainly, this balance has grown by $70 million since the 2023 property tax increase. And we are now $63.5 million above the bond rating requirement. Despite these facts, I've yet to hear a clear plan from this body on how to utilize this surplus. What is the purpose of accumulating such a large balance if it's not being reinvested in our community? If these funds can't be used to address critical staffing issues, then what are they for? Please share your plan for this abundance. For anyone interested, I have charts showing how the unassigned fund balance has changed over time. These figures are pulled directly from the county's SharePoint, and I'm happy to share them. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Next is Susan Allen. Her topic is Plan Rutherford. Susan, I see you're moving a lot better. Feeling better?
Good evening. My name is Susan Allen. I live on Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro. My comments tonight are to address the Middle Tennessee Association of Realtors misinformation campaign on social media that is spreading claims aimed at opposing Plan Rutherford. They are framing the issue as detrimental to taxpayers and property owners, when in reality, they are acting in the interest of the real estate industry. Whereas Plan Rutherford is designed to be a guide for development and for a prosperous future through responsible growth, and not how future planning would impact a particular industry. For more than two decades, the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance has expressed concerns about land use issues, particularly about dense subdivisions facilitated by sewer extensions and in areas where roads and infrastructure are inadequate. At the last Public Works meeting, Planning Director Doug Demasi explained and clarified the plan's purpose, which is to guide growth strategically, encouraging it in suitable areas. Growth will continue to come, and to be prepared, it is necessary to manage and coordinate it effectively. If you are following this issue, and you should be, it's important, then you know what Plan Rutherford is. You can access a very handy flipbook of the plan at planrutherford.org and go through it page by page or skip around from chapter to chapter. It's not what the Realtors are trying to make you believe. The plan serves as a framework of recommendations, not mandates, and is still open to new input. Adoption does not change zoning or regulations or deny property rights. Once the final version of the plan is adopted, any recommendations that come from it will require separate zoning and codes updates, each with its own public hearing that you can attend and express your opinion. Ask questions now. Planning Director Demasi emphasized transparency and wants you to call him with your questions. His office number is 615-898-7730. Talking to your county commissioners is important, too, as they will be the ones making the final decision. Again, review the draft plan at planrutherford.org by clicking on Share Your Vision or find it under the news heading at rutherfordneighborhoodalliance.org. The RNA would like to hear from you, too, and you can use our contact page at our website. Get your information firsthand, not from the Realtors' online misinformation. Thank you, and Merry Christmas to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Next is Gary Wilson. His topic is to request an investigation on a county official misconduct. Wilson.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and speak. I'm Dr. Jerry Scott Wilson. Been a resident of Murfreesboro for four or five years, physician in the Nashville area for the past 15. I currently work with the VA, veteran of OIF myself. I've been involved in some action with the county that's developed over the past couple of years. There've been a number of updates in recent months and even the past week or two. Just wanted the opportunity really just to basically present to the commission and request your consideration and review of recent events. I just had the opportunity to send some recent developments and documents to Chairman Phillips for dissemination. But basically, the action I'm taking is focused on things, matters that are critical public interest and generally ones that are universally accepted. Talking about protecting parental rights, father's rights in particular, equal protection matters, especially not just for gender, but marital status, which, if you get a chance to review, it's some very interesting and antiquated thinking as far as the process. Also, some matters of concern regarding equal protection issues with veterans. So again, these are all things that I would think most of you would be interested in, and certainly protecting against any official misconduct and allowing opportunity for due process. So I just appreciate your consideration, and hopefully I can come back in a couple of months and go into a little more detail then.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Item H, elections and confirmations. We'll call on our steering vice chair, Commissioner Pettis Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We begin with elections and confirmations, the election of notaries. Listing of notaries may be found in your iPads, commissioners. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County Notaries.
We have a motion and a second to elect the list of notaries. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Item two, steering would like to confirm Brad Fowler to the Rutherford County Public Building Authority. This is a six-year term. This is a mayor appointment. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second. We have a motion and a second to confirm Brad Fowler. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Item three, steering would like to also confirm the reappointment of Tom Hartley and David Puckett to the Correctional Work Center Board. This is a two-year term that will expire January 2027. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to confirm the reappointment of Tom Hartley and David Puckett. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, motion to approve.
Item four, steering wishes to confirm the reappointment of Gary Wosnowski to the Codes Enforcement Adjustments and Appeals Board. This is a three-year term. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to confirm the reappointment of Gary Wencowski. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, motion to approve carries.
Item five, steering would also like to announce one audit committee vacancy for a county citizen member. This will be for a four-year term. Item six, we also wish to announce three vacancies for Agricultural Advisory Board, one farm woman, one farm man, and one county commissioner. These will be for a two-year term. Item seven, I would like to announce one CCR Board vacancy for a three-year term. And steering would like to announce a vacancy for county genealogists. This is a mayor appointment. Mr. Chairman, this concludes the business of elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Item I, resolution to approve the consent agenda. We'll call on our chairman pro tem Trey Gooch.
Chairman, I have reviewed the items on the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. For this, we'll be on the board. If you would, please cast your vote.
One that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item J, is there any unfinished business? Item K, no public hearings tonight, and I don't see Doug Demasi. He's taking a Christmas break, I believe. Item L, we'll get into our reports by standing for standing committees. L1, Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee Chairman Robert P.
Doug, we appreciate the early Christmas gift. No public hearings tonight. Unfortunately, we have several budget items. Hopefully, we can get through those fairly quickly. First is budget item A, and this comes from the road board. There were actually four different items, and we've put them together in this one resolution. There was a promotion. There's also some pension rate increases. There's two pieces of equipment that is being purchased, and also bridge repair. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the highway fund be amended as follows: A decrease in committed fund balance of $22,045, an increased revenue of federal through the state brick grant, $45,000, increased expenditures for pensions, $7,045, and brick, other contracted services, $60,000. And then under contracted services, a decrease in assigned fund balance of $1,070,370. Increased expenditures for pensions, $6,835, pensions, $45,885, and pensions for $7,650. Bridge construction, $325,000, and highway equipment, $685,000. Resolved this 12th day of December, 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item L1A. Questions or comments? Seeing none, we're on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes.
Motion passes.
Budget item B, resolution. Whereas the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office received the Fiscal Year 24 Body-Worn Camera Policy and Implementation Program, excuse me, grant from the United States Department of Justice in the grant amount of $291,853, and requiring a 50% local match of $291,853 over a three-year period. And whereas the sheriff's office intends to purchase 219 body-worn cameras for the divisions that currently don't have them. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute the grant documents with the United States Department of Justice for the FY '24 Body-Worn Camera Policy and Implementation Program Grant in the grant amount of $291,853, and requiring a 50% local match of $291,853. And be it further resolved that the General Fund be amended as follows to recognize the revenue and appropriate the first year of the grant. A decrease in unassigned fund balance of $202,063, which is actually our match. Increased revenues, other direct federal revenues of $202,063. Federal revenues, increased expenditures of data processing services of $103,390, and processing data, processing equipment, $300,736. Resolved this 12th day of December, 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion and a second to approve item L1B. Questions and comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes. Commissioner Oliver, your vote?
It's a yes.
Thank you.
Budget item C, a resolution where the Rutherford County Emergency Management Agency, the EMA, received the hazardous material emergency preparedness grant from the State of Tennessee Department of Military, Tennessee Emergency Management Agency in a total amount of $22,500, and requires a county match of 20% or $4,500. And whereas the EMA will fund the attendance at the International Hazardous Material Response Teams Conference in June 2025 for employees from the Rutherford County Fire Rescue Department, the town of Smyrna, the city of Laverne, and the city of Murfreesboro. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute a contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Military, Tennessee Emergency Management Agency for the hazardous material emergency preparedness grant in the total amount of $22,500, and requires a county match of 20% or $4,500. Be it resolved that the general fund be amended as follows to recognize the revenue and appropriate the grant: A decrease in unassigned fund balance of $4,500; An increase in year 25 HMP, other federal through state grants, $18,000; An increased expenditures of 25 HMP for travel, $22,500. Resolve this 12th day of December 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second to approve item L1C. I'm sorry, L1C. Any questions or comments? Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes.
Budget item D, this was forwarded to budget from property management. Resolution where the Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce, the chamber, is marketing for sale of the property at 4511 and 4573 Singer Road in Murfreesboro for the county, and the chamber recommends that a survey of the property, appraisal, and geotechnical studies be performed. And whereas the estimated cost of these items is $30,000. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford, excuse me, by the general fund, be amended as follows to appropriate funds for the survey of the property, appraisal, and geotechnical studies: A decrease in unassigned fund balance of $30,000; An increase expenditures for other contracted service for $30,000. Resolve this 12th day of December 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second to approve item L1D. Questions or comments? Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Nineteen yes, two no.
Item passes.
Budget item E. Budget item E is our calendar, which is for our oncoming budget cycle for this year. And I want to point out a couple of things on there. One reason we're going to vote on this is we're making sure that everybody gets a copy of it. You should have a copy on your desk. You can get electronic copy, of course, too. And something I want to point out is if you look at the different dates, you'll find that each agency's budget that we look at are, that are being reviewed for that night are listed. So there's a particular budget item or agency that you're particularly interested in. You can check the dates there. One thing I will mention, too, there's a conflict on the 29th of May with property management. We're trying to get that worked out and resolved. We've got a very tight schedule due to some of the new federal holidays, and so we don't have a lot of wiggle room. But we wanted to make sure that everybody had a chance to look at this beforehand, and, you know, you can set the dates up so you can be sure to attend if you so mean to. So resolution be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the 2025-26 budget calendar and schedule be approved. A copy of the same being attached heretofore is Exhibit 1 and Exhibit 2, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, with the adoption date for the 2025-26 budget schedule for the June 23rd, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. Resolve this 12th day of December 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second to approve the budget calendar. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Michael, you want to make a comment on that? We're good.
Motion passes. Chairman McAdoo, before we leave that, we'll probably move property management, without objection, to, up to Wednesday. I believe that'll be the 28th. That's okay with you?
Okay. Item F is a pay lift resolution. Whereas there is a desire to provide a 4% lift to the pay table to better position the county for retention and recruiting of employees. And whereas the lift to the table will be implemented in January 2025 as administratively feasible. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the pay table shall be increased by 4% and further that the general fund, solid waste fund, and ambulance service fund shall be amended in accordance with the attached schedules incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this 12th day of December 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second. Now discussion. Eric Carr.
Yeah, mine will be very quick. Just the phrase administratively feasible, what was that referring to?
What that's got to do. I don't know if on your iPad, there's a, there should be a schedule. But I'm going to flip my book around here so you can see it. We mentioned the ambulance service, the other agencies that are involved in making this pay increase. Each one of these individuals, pay has to be looked at. If you notice, there's quite a few pages here. At the time that this is coming, being done, our finance department is, of course, doing their payroll, but they're also doing W-2s. And what, the only reason that was put in there, you know, they, I don't think they'll be able to get it the first week. Michael, go ahead.
Yeah, so just to clarify that, the reason we put that in there is really two reasons. Well, one main reason, which is time. We, the way the county works is we got several payrolls. Not everybody's paid on the same time. So during that month, we issue about 10,000 W-2s on top of 1099s. The first payroll for some of our employees is going to be January 3rd, which is the Friday, the same week as New Year's. We won't have enough hours in the day to get that implemented. And so we needed some flexibility to either have it on the 17th payroll or the 31st payroll. Obviously, we'll do it as fast as we can. But with IRS deadline of getting about 10,000 W-2s out and the 1099s, we needed that flexibility to either be the 17th or the 31st. That's why, that's why it was in there.
Eric Carr.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity to speak on this. As most of you know, well, all of you know, our employees are our most valuable asset. And when we construct a budget every year, when Michael and I sit down and pore over this along with the directors, we spend quite a few hours trying to establish the table on which that, that budget's going to rest. And there are four, and I've said this to some of you before, but it's certainly worth repeating because I want you to understand the process that Michael and I spend literally 100 hours or more each budget process going through. And so if you know our process, your contribution to that process is a better process. And so the first leg of that table is a balanced budget. That's extremely important. The second leg to that table is, do, are we, are we properly funding those departments, and especially the fund balance, and we can move forward on those projects that are necessary that move this county forward? The third leg of that table is taking care of our employees. And that's what I want to talk just a second about because we spend a lot of time talking about how do we take care of our employees? And there are three components to that particular leg. The first is, as you know, especially recently, every year, we have inflation. And so the dollar our employees made last year, unless adjusted for inflation, is worth less the next year. And so we are mindful of to make sure that our most valuable asset does not lose, that that dollar does not lose value through no fault of their own, through inflation. So we make a distinction, Michael and I, and Sonya, when we discuss this, we make a distinction between raises and a cost of living adjustment. For our purposes, when we talk about a cost of living adjustment, that's not a raise. That is something to hold them harmless because of inflation, through no fault of their own. And we did that the first year I was here and the second year I was here. First year, it was a 3.25% raise to the table, a subsequent 1.75% lift to the table. And then last year, we did a 3.25% with a, excuse me, a 4.25% with a 1.75% for a total of six. And so every year, when we construct this budget, that is the third leg of the table. The fourth leg of the table is, and they're all equally important because they got to balance because on these four legs sit the entire budget. The fourth leg of the table is, to what extent does this budget harm future budgets? So Michael and I are constantly looking downstream, thinking forward, being proactive. What are we doing today that will unnecessarily harm future budgets? And so that's what we do. The critical component in this is, for us, revenue because unfortunately, and you all know this because we fought this battle, we do not have the revenue sources of the cities of Rutherford County, Murfreesboro, Smyrna, Laverne. We've talked about that. We don't have the revenue sources of Williamson County, Brentwood, or Franklin. Those are the cards that we dealt. We fought that battle. You know it all too well. That's the cards that were dealt. Having said all that, we still have an obligation to take care of our employees. That is essential. So what I'm saying is, is that there, I want to say this, though. Reading the transcripts, the situation with our employees, quite honestly, in my opinion, isn't quite as dire as it has been characterized. Let me give you some examples. And if you want to speak to Sonya, she's here, and she can speak to these directly. In the county general, we have 428 full-time employees. Of those 428 full-time employees, as of today, we have 25 vacancies, 25 openings. In the ambulance service, we have 190 full-time employees. Currently, as of today, according to HR, we have three vacancies. EMA, 34 employees, one vacancy, one opening. Fire, we have 93 full-time employees, two vacancies. Solid Waste, 56 with four vacancies. Sheriff's Department, this is the, this is the, a serious issue because of detention and way detention is structured and what detention does for the rest of the department. And I want to applaud Sheriff Fitzhugh and Steve Spence in particular because we've spent several hours in my office trying to address the specific need, especially the need within detention because the need in detention is very real and quite acute. And just so you know, and I want to, if I speak out of turn, Sheriff Fitzhugh, I want you to correct me, but they use detention as a feeder system, like almost a farm system, for their patrol. So the pressure on detention is always constant with openings because as those guys become qualified, they, they're trying to promote within. Is that accurate, Sheriff Fitzhugh? So they're trying to move those guys into vacancies and patrol. So that constantly puts a lot of pressure on the detention. But with the sheriff's office, there are 548 full-time positions. Currently, there are 58 vacancies. However, if you go to detention as a subgroup, there are 125 full-time positions with 29 vacancies. So that's extraordinarily high. And what I want to tell you is, is Sheriff Fitzhugh, Steve Spence, Michael Smith, Sonya, and Eric and I have been working on this, what, since August? And so what we know we have to address with our pay scale as a county is we have to do three things. We have to constantly make sure that our employees are compensated because of inflation, and they are obviously being, it's a competitive environment so we can compete with the surrounding community, not just the public sector, but the private sector as well. Secondly, according to EMS Director Brian Gaither, we have an issue that we need to address with regard to experience. Right now, we only give five years' worth of credit on experience. Is that right, Sonya? And so that's leaving us at a serious disadvantage with some of the other surrounding communities that are offering 10. And so we're trying to work that in to our adjusted pay table going forward. The third and final thing is, is we as a body, and me as a mayor, we need the flexibility within our pay table to tweak a job description to the extent that we can make that job description, like detention, more competitive without unnecessarily causing a ripple effect throughout the entire pay table. I can say that Sonya and Michael and Eric have worked long hours on finding a solution for that. And we're getting close. We will, we think we'll have a solution by the time the budget arrives. Having said that, I want to reiterate that it is always our intention, the mayor's office, to take care of our employees. And so while I believe this raise may be slightly premature, the fact of the matter is, is our employees are deserving of it. And it was my intention to come back to you in May or April, when we proposed the final budget, to come to you with a 4.25% pay increase for our employees, and a lift to the table of 1.75%. So, Mr. Chairman, what I would like to do, so we don't have to do this twice, is I would like to amend the motion to include 4.25% as opposed to 4%. Thank you.
Comments? Other questions?
Question. You got somebody else?
Oliver.
I have a question relative to Ms. Stevenson's report. And it seems like in budget, she said we're like 6% behind with our employees. And so I'm trying to figure out why are we settling on the 4% or 4.25% if we're 6% behind and what Commissioner Beverly had recommended was maybe 8%? and what Commissioner Beverly had recommended was maybe 8%? So I'm trying to figure out how we came to that. And that seems like we'll still be behind. So.
If we can, we can suspend the rules and let Sonya address that, or maybe Michael can.
I can address a piece of it and then kind of give you the facts of how we got here and then answer any questions after that. So addressing kind of the 6% or so that Sonya read, and Sonya will correct me if I say something wrong, but Sonya does a pay study almost every year. When she receives that pay study, she generally gets that in January or February, you know, done by a third party. But when she gets that, that's really for the previous year, because you have to complete that previous year, meaning, so last year, that pay study, on average, and I want to stress that, because that does not mean every position in the county, but on average, we were nine to 12% below market, I guess, if you want to call it that, on average across the board. We had some people that are above, some people are below, but on average, we were, we were nine to 12%. And so we raised the table four and a quarter percent last year. And so I think the difference kind of there is, hey, we're still, on average, maybe 6% below, I think, is the number. That's how we arrived at the 6% to answer that question. And then to how we arrived at the four, just walking through the steps of how that came through, I believe Commissioner Beverly presented a plan at Public Safety. I believe part of his plan was 8% during this current year. He proposed that. I do not believe it passed out of Public Safety. Then at Budget, there was a proposal and some discussions about, hey, what can we do? If we can't afford the 8%, what number can we afford? The number that was presented at Budget was 4%. Budget Committee had at length discussions, I believe that discussion was an hour to an hour and a half, on, on options to funding, because what you had before you denied is one option that was on the table. There are several options, and I think, and somebody from Budget can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was, how much can we give without trying to raise property taxes, without having to dip into non-recurring dollars? And the 4% was the number that the Budget Committee settled on and passed on to this body. That's kind of the steps that I know. Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong from Budget, but that was my recollection.
Oliver, does that answer all of your questions, or would you like to hear from Ms. Stevenson? Thank you. Other questions?
Quick question. Will the four, the four and a quarter, reclude fixing along the lines of some of the proposals I've heard in terms of adjusting steps and everything along those lines? Is that going to allow, if that's adopted tonight, enough to do that? Or is it, will it be back to, will the finance folks be back here to ask for additional money if that four, four and a quarter goes through first? I guess it's to Michael, I guess, is who the question would be for. In other words, I've heard several proposals, because I've, you know, this, we just started hearing about this a week ago. Okay? Any details about it? And if we jump the table 4%, you've got all these other problems in the sheriff's office, we've heard identified briefly, is, are we going to be able to fix those problems? Because I've heard fixing those problems is not cheap. Are we going to be able to fix those in the context of a 4% rise? When, I think everybody knows, we only go up, what, 3%, 4% a year in growth. We've just burned all of our growth on a four, four and a quarter percent rise. So at that point, are we, into the next fiscal year, into the next fiscal year, before we can even start thinking about actually fixing the problems the sheriff's office, for example, is having? And I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know what the numbers look like, but just kind of on its face, you're looking at 4%. Okay? Never mind if there, never mind if there's a recession or anything along those lines where growth slows a little bit, and we're looking at a tax increase or dipping into fund balance or whatever. So, never mind that. I'm just asking, is that going to allow us, give us enough reserves to fix it, to fix the problem we've heard about?
Carter, did you want to address that?
So, that's, that's the $64,000 question. And that's why, and Michael can explain this much better than I, why we wait till April, because that's when we get the last final state revenue projections in. And Michael can explain that. And so the thing that does worry me is, we commit ourselves to this raise, which is important for our employees. It's an investment. Yet, we're doing it before we have all the revenue numbers back in from the state. Having said that, I contacted the state today. I said, "State, what, what does the revenue look like coming in for July, August, September, and October of this year?" And so the numbers that I received, and I'll be glad to share those with you, they're in my office, is that they're ahead of where they were this time last year, which, to your question, Commissioner Irvin, is very encouraging. But as you know, what we did in November doesn't predict what's going to happen necessarily economically in February and March, which is why, and I think Michael can tell us, why we like to wait as long as we can before we actually decide on what we're going to commit to. Having said that, Commissioner Irvin, I am as confident as I can be, or I wouldn't make the recommendation, that we'll be okay. Do we limit our options by committing so early? Yes, we do. Anybody who says otherwise probably doesn't fully understand the process. But I wouldn't make the 4.25 recommendation if I really didn't believe that I couldn't continue to work with Sheriff Fitchu on specifically solving the detention issue with those detention officers. And we have a few, a couple other pockets as well, and also identifying the, the experience issue from five to 10. Is that a guarantee? No, it's not. But I do believe we will be able to resolve those issues.
Sonya, Ms. Stevenson, do you have, do you have anything you'd like to add to that? As far as what will happen from budget, from our budget consideration for next year? Do you have any follow-up on that? You don't have to, I'm just asking. Wait.
Mr. Chairman.
Is that a yes or no?
Yes.
Is that a yes or no, Sonya? Do you have a follow-up?
Please.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, when you, when you asked me earlier, did I want Ms. Stevenson to come up? I shook my head, yes.
Make a motion.
Because I would like to move to suspend the rules and have Ms. Stevenson come up to answer any questions that we may have.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. And a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Stevenson.
While Sonya's coming up, I do have an answer to Commissioner Irvin's question. I think what came out of Budget was really two issues. One issue we have is some individual positions, and Sonya can hopefully corroborate what I'm saying here. We have some individual positions that are below market, maybe below others, some individual departments that we need to target. We targeted one of those last year, for example, to raise that minimum wage. That is one issue that we have, and I think we have a separate issue from a budgetary perspective, that we were on average last year below nine to 10, nine to 12% below. That's where Sonya came up with the four. So really, we're further behind that. And the other way, and I forgot to mention this earlier, the state the last two years has raised, the average state employee raises were 16% over the last two years. And so when we started looking at all that, I really think, before you can fix anything, we have to define what the problem is we're fixing, right? And so while it's true, we do have one pot of growth money, you know, a part of money that our revenue grows every year, I want to be clear on that, that's not infinite, right? We have a pot. And so I think, when, when Budget was tackling this, it was, okay, we can't, mid-year, we can't fix certain issues mid-year. And so I think the intent was to say, hey, can we try to fix one issue that wasn't our control? And while, yes, I think that does limit, when you look at a pot of money that we have that grows every year, you know, you have to set the priorities as, as the mayor's office does and as this commission does every year. And so I'm not advocating that one issue is more important than the other, but I do think you have a pot of money here that's X number of dollars. And right now, this, this resolution that's before you tonight would tackle one problem, which is that on average, we were below the market value. Obviously, mathematically, that takes away from that pot to target another specific area. Now, I don't have a crystal ball to say, how much would we have left, right, to tackle, let's say, for detention, for example. But I don't think that fixes the detention problem. It just means that, yeah, we may have a little less to fix that. But if we threw everything at the detention problem, we still have another problem. So I think it's, you know, as this body gives the finance office and Sonya's office direction, I think it's, it's a pro and con, which, which issue is more important? They're both important. It's how you allocate that pot of dollars. And so mathematically, yes, we would have less money to fix the other problem and target certain specific positions. But if we threw all the money at that, at that problem, we're going to have less to fix the overall pay issue below market. And so actually, yes, that pot, you would have less. But the dollar amount less, I wouldn't be able to tell you exactly that dollar amount until we get to probably July 1, which is after the budget passes, when we set the tax rate, right? And so I think, I'm hoping that that describes, defines the problem and kind of lays out some solutions there between those two. And I think that's the battle every year, is we have an infinite amount of money and we have, you know, a bunch of problems, and we solve as much as we can with the lowest tax rate we can really, is, is kind of how I look at that mathematical equation. But yes, you are correct. If we tackle one, we're going to have less resources to tackle the other. And I think the goal is to tackle both as best we can, but that's kind of a math equation that we constantly are struggling with.
So from, if I could, follow-up? Okay. So it would be a challenge, is what I heard. It could be, it could be a real challenge. And one of the concerns here is, we're setting this budget priority today as opposed to in the regular budget cycle. And when you set a budget priority today, none of us, okay, if you, if you have a crystal ball, go to Wall Street, I got lots of friends up there, they would love to meet you. However, I don't have a crystal ball. And we're setting that budget priority, that 4%, four and a quarter today, even though I think the mayor indicated to be April or so before it would be due. So we're setting it today, and we're stuck with a recurring expense. And we can quibble whether or not we're paying with, sort of, with whether or not we're paying with a non-recurring or not. I mean, there's a couple different arguments. Most people think it's non-recurring, whatever. However, there's no doubt, we're setting up a recurring expense. It's locked in. Once it's locked in, okay, you're looking at, if there's, if there's a downturn in the economy, if this number turns out to be optimistic or whatever, where do you end up? Are you ready to vote for a tax increase? Are you ready to raid fund balance? What other options might be out there? I mean, I'd be interested to know if Michael has other potential options or can think of any for, you know, solving this particular issue. But what I heard was, this is a challenge, if we're going to go ahead and do it, in terms of creating additional solutions to solve the sheriff's issue, among others. Okay? And I'm also trying to figure out, we're setting up, we're deciding tonight, if you vote for this tonight, and growth comes in at 3%, growth comes in at 3%, what are you going to do?
I'll defer back to Michael if there's a solution.
I will say this, and I'll stick strictly to the facts from, from building the budget, because I'm trying to stay as neutral as I can, because, you know, I have employees that work here and they would, you know, love a raise, but also, as a finance director, we can never have enough money and we always spend too much. So that's kind of the line I toe here. But I'll say this, mid-year, it's going to be very hard to tackle that other problem we're talking about, to target specific departments and target specific positions. That's very hard to do mid-year. I believe Sonya's office is going through, of all the over 1,000 employees we have, they went back through every resume of every position we have to try to fix that issue and tackle the experience issue, because we don't just want to fix it for new people. We really value, want to value the people that have been here 20 years and look back and say, hey, do we need to recognize an additional five years of experience on that table? And so that, to me, is doable, but it's only doable at the start of a budget year, with the time constraint of looking through over 1,000. It's probably closer to 1,500 resumes, I think, that Sonya's staff has went through. And so then it came back to, what can we do this year? You know, what, what options would we have mid-year? And really, it was to tackle the, across the board, we're X percentage away from the market. And so while they're both difficult, I think the other option you would have at the budget time is, is kind of what we did this past year. You saw, we moved some pennies around. We tried to give the schools what they needed, at the same time giving the county what they needed, at the same time paying debt off early. And so obviously, those solutions, there's more options, but those options are more complicated at budget time. And so I think that would then turn the priority to that problem at the budget time, which honestly just takes more time to implement from an hours' point of view. Obviously, we try to have strong, healthy reserves, so if property tax growth comes in at 2%, while we would not like that, I do think the county's well positioned to weather that storm. But also, there's a chance it comes in at 6%, and we would all be thrilled. And so if I had that crystal ball here, I probably wouldn't be here. I probably would be investing somewhere in the stock market more and playing options. But, but I think if, if you want to tackle one of those problems mid-year, the other one is not easily tackle, to be able to be tackled in January. One, just because I think Sonya's office is still finalizing all the resumes. I mean, they've worked on that a lot of hours to go through that, to look at that. And I think that, we have another study scheduled to come back in in January. I don't want to speak for Sonya, but I think it's January. I don't know if that helps to answer the question, but that's the best I could do.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Right here. Thank you.
Commissioner Beverly.
I want to say how proud I am of Michael and Sonya and our Budget Committee and even Public Safety for getting this conversation started. We have seven months to look at all the aspects, seven months to consider everything. We can raise grades, we can raise subgrades, we can look at longevity, we can look at experience. I don't want to think of this as a reoccurring expense. This is a reoccurring investment that we will get a return on by the quality of services that we provide to our community, what we are charged to do. This is an investment. I did propose a much higher raise. That's where I would like to see it. But this is a seventh month at this point goal, not tonight. But we have to get started. Many of you guys know that if Murfreesboro Police stopped someone out on Highway 99, and a sheriff's deputy leaving roll call from the jail is headed out to his zone, and he backs them up, that Murfreesboro officer with five years' experience is going to be bringing home nearly $75,000 a year. Meanwhile, the deputy with the same amount of experience might be at $56,000, almost $57,000, a $20,000 pay difference? That's to work the same exact area, to work the same exact community. And while we are better in many aspects, we cannot ignore the fact that over time, this disparity is going to increase and employees are going to be considering other options. And these are employees that make up our largest investments every, every year with first responders, but also in other aspects of the county, that it can take upwards to one year to replace just the person in that position. But will we get the experience back? Probably not. It's imperative we remain a place people want to live. We have to remain economically insulated, and in order to attract that industry, we have to provide stable services. And if we don't invest in these services and we start to see heavier turnover, our quality will continue to go down. Action now is going to keep turnover down, when the largest investment we make at the sheriff's office, EMS, and fire, will take one full year to train. We have to take action today, overall, because 4% does not bring them up to a marketable wage, in my opinion, but it's a start. But in government mid-year is difficult to accomplish. But today, we have the opportunity to say, we see the problem, and we're not going to let it bleed for seven more months.
Mr. Chairman, but if I'm hearing Commissioner Beverly accurately, then he's basically saying we should do this now and not solve the problem and put it off another whole commission cycle, budget cycle. I mean, we haven't seen the data, I haven't seen the apple-to-apple data of what he refers to, happy to look at it. I've tried to gather as much data as I can, you know, over the, over the past week or two. But basically, what Commissioner Beverly is suggesting, let's do it now. And that puts us in a real bind, based on what Michael was just saying, about how much of a challenge this is to do mid-year. So if this puts us in a bind to do it mid-year, it makes it a real challenge. The way to solve this is basically to do it in the regular budget cycle, to task the mayor, Sonya, Michael, to bring us a report at the beginning of this budget cycle, to solve the problem. We have with the sheriff's office to figure out the different, you know, kind of classifications and, you know, tables and steps and all that kind of stuff to actually solve it. and, you know, tables and steps and all that kind of stuff to actually solve it. That's, that's the problem that I see with what, you know, respectfully, with what Commissioner Beverly just said. He wants to basically put it off another year by only raising the table 4% and leaving the problem in place with the sheriff's office, because we can't afford it. We can't afford the problem beyond if we do the 4%. That takes care of one of the legs that, or one of the legs that he, that the mayor was talking about, et cetera. But I'm trying to, the only way to really solve it, it sounds like, is to do this in the regular budget cycle. At that point, you can address the different bands, or whatever they're called now, the different pay levels, things along those lines, without being constrained by the 4%, 4 and 1/4% increase. That's, that's the problem. And if I'm wrong, just correct me. But Michael, you want to address, is that essentially correct?
Let me try to bring us back together just a little bit. I do not want to cut off discussion or debate, but we suspended the rules to allow Sonya Stevenson to address, and that's what we should be doing right now. Sonya, would you?
I think the question was, you know, what would this look later, if I remember at this point? You know, when the, the survey comes in, I don't, I don't think I'd be honest with you if I didn't tell you, I think that we will be behind. We know that our competitors, some have raised their pay, and we also know that last year, while we did do a lift and our employees appreciate it, we do know that there was still left some options out there for us to move forward for some of our positions. So in looking at that, I think with the issues that we've got going on, it would help with recruitment, I do believe that, and maybe retention at this point, if we were to implement this. I do think that, like Michael, I have to stay neutral, looking at what's good for the, the budget, but what's also good for our employees. But I do think that when we can post a position at a higher rate, I do think that's going to encourage some more applicants to come into the county. So I do think that that would be beneficial. But to say that this 4% or 4.25%, it will correct it, I think we all know the answer to that. I think we'll have to look when the survey comes in, and it would be, I wouldn't, it wouldn't be right for me to say at this point, because I haven't seen it. I don't know what the data is going to say, excuse me, I don't know what the data is going to show us. I know that I've looked at some of the public safety as part of my research for presenting to the Public Safety Committee, so I know that, looking at that data, it looks like we're probably going to get some numbers that are going to put us behind. At that point, I think it would be wise of us to maybe do some market adjustments. That's one of the things that we've recommended and talked about, and that may be something you look at. But until we get to that point, I don't know what options to give you at this point, other than just, I do think that a lift will help us with recruitment. Any other questions? Is that?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
I have a question for both our department heads here. Trying to rely heavily on y'all's expertise and your, your service with us and knowledge of both your, your, the HR, our personnel, and then our finances as a whole, as it all fits together. I'd like to ask just kind of a blunt answer, knowing what you know now, which is what you've given us and what we've gathered here, now that we've been proposed a 4% and even a potential increase by 1/4%, if that amendment gets made and goes through, is it recommended by your department in favor or not? As, as the information that we all have collective now, knowing that there's, we need more information to come, but just what we've got now to make that decision? Because we all want to give our employees a pay raise. We don't want to hold them back, and we don't want to say no, only to find out that the numbers came in and we could have and should have. So I want to make sure we're making the best informed decision, because I also, like the rest of this commission, not only do I need to pay attention to, are we paying our employees, are we getting them their, the raises on time and the right amount that they get and they deserve? I need to remember where that money comes from, the historical fact of last time we gave a large pay increase and then essentially took from the deficit, and then the schools came in with a big school request, led into our first term on this cycle with a giant tax increase. And I can see the history of this lining back up to do it again. And I'd like to just make sure that I'm making the best informed decision with a yes or no vote for myself. So I have to weigh heavily on both of your departments. If I could just get a yes or no you would recommend to go through or not go through with this, as your department head.
That puts you on the spot. How you like it?
I'm teasing you. Hold on. I think it puts us in a really tough spot. I'm going to speak a little for Sonya here. For us to advocate whether we should or should not do this, that's a really tough spot, because at the same time, this also affects our salaries, it also affects the employees that work for us. I don't know that Sonya felt comfortable saying that, but I think, I'm going to speak to the factual part about the revenue, the projections, can we afford it, can we not? But I don't know that me or Sonya are in a place to tell you, should we give a raise, should we not? I think she can talk about the market conditions, right, of whether we need it from a market perspective, from a hiring perspective. I can talk about the projections, what property tax looks like over the last 10 years, what I projected going forward. But I don't know that that's, that's a great thing for us to advocate for when it affects our salaries and when it affects, you know, the people that work directly under us. That puts us in a really tough spot, to be honest.
Can you not be, you know, not biased on that, and give your honest assessment in that? I don't mean to not be fair on it, but that's part of being the department head, I kind of need to know that direction that y'all would recommend, as I take notes of the facts that I've got and the limiting facts that I don't have.
The, the one fact that I can give you is based on our last salary survey, which, as was explained earlier, we got the salary survey last year, which is the year before's data, so it's basically two years behind at this point. And I can tell you with the, the percent that, with the increase that we did last year, I plugged that in to see where we would be today, and we're still behind. So the overall amount is still behind. So from a fact-based thing, we're still behind what our survey says we should be in comparison with our counterparts that the Steering Committee, Committee had told me to compare to. So that's, that's factual, that's, that's the truth, so.
I went back 10 to 15 years, I'd pull up the chart, I know it was at least 10, to see what the growth of property tax was. On average, taking out the reappraisal years, because those years are always skewed based on the certified tax rate, we've grown at 3% to 4% every year on property taxes. So I looked at that, I looked at where our sales tax was this year. The mayor's correct, our sales tax as of last month is up 4.3%. So I looked at that. I've looked at the current tax rule that we have. Of course, that's not updated until, technically not updated and final until October of every year, or September, October, when that date comes. And so that's kind of how, when somebody asks me what we could afford, that's kind of the pot I look at. So when I build the budget in April, March, April and May, when, when we do that, I still don't have final numbers. We build it based on projections, based on historical rates. We take in current market conditions. For example, we lowered the act of facilities tax this year, that estimate, we cut it in half, not knowing what the new law would do based on the paying at the end versus the beginning. We did not increase our interest income projections based on the Fed lowering interest rates this year. So I'm saying, we take into those things to account, and based on the pot of money, based on the estimates, this pot of money would, would cover the, the 4%. And then it comes into, okay, what do you do this year? What do you do from January to June? And so the first thing I look at is, what's the revenue look like over the last four to five months, five to six months for this budget year? Of course, we're almost halfway through, through December. I can tell you, it looks like we have adequate revenue to cover January through, through June, without affecting our fund balance. And I say that without affecting our fund balance, meaning, anytime you spend more money, that's less money that closes out, but I'm saying, we could do it with additional revenue instead of right now dipping into fund balance. Now, obviously, anytime you spend more money, that's the less that goes into your savings account. But I can use additional revenue this time instead of fund balance to cover this for, for the next six months. I think without any negative impact to our bond ratings or to our fund balance, I'd be the first person jumping up and down if, if we were going to impact that. I'll tell you that. And then we had, we did, we got rerated again this week by S and P and Moody's. Got rerated, that came out Monday, I believe. So I hope that answers your question there.
Thank you, Mr. President. Other questions or comments?
Are we back in session?
Yes. I don't think we ever left, but yes, we're back in session.
Mr. Chair.
Beverly.
I kind of want to reiterate, I guess, it got lost in translation. 4% now shows stability, it brings, I'm sorry, it brings some level of stability, but it's not over. Over the next seven months, we all have to commit to bringing options. If we want to debate, we need to bring an option as well. We come with options over the next seven months of how we can improve this problem, because it has been identified. We can find a solution that works in conjunction with the action we're taking tonight. But in seven months, we have to come to a conclusion on what we're going to do for the next budget year, because further action has to be taken, not just tonight, but in June as well. So if that kind of clarifies what I meant by that, let's do something tonight to get the ball rolling and show our employees we hear them.
Well, where does the money come from to solve the problem after the 4%? You spent the growth, you've committed to do it next year, where does the other money come from?
Mayor Carr.
I think I, I think I can help answer that a little bit. It comes from the same place, Commissioner, that it always comes from when we do this in April. So, and, and I want to, just aside, the reason I asked for 4 and 1/4% and not 4% was because 4 and 1/4% is what we did last year, and, and we were working toward that. So, and that was, that was the reason there. So whether it's 4 or 4 and 1/4%, I just, 4 and 1/4% is what we did last year, and that was a safe match. But to answer your question, where's the money come from? It comes from the same place, it comes from reoccurring revenues that we expect to come in. I assume you're talking about where does the money come in, in the '25, '26 budget year? I think that's what you're asking, is that correct?
That's correct. In other words, we've already locked in 4 or 4 and 1/4%, that's our, that's the 3% or 4% growth, okay, basically is the average. If we're, if we're exceeding it, we're lucky, and, okay, I get, we get the differential. Okay? I'll stand up, sorry. But the question then is, if we're, you know, in need of additional funds above 4% to solve some problems, to do whatever, is that going to be a tax increase? Is that going to, or we go to fund balance, I guess. But what does that mean? That means non-recurring money.
So that's, that's why I think 4 and 1/4%, in my opinion, is all we can do right now, this early, before we begin the budget cycle, and especially before we get subsequent economic reports from the state. However, having, to your point, let's assume we didn't do anything tonight, let's assume that we punted to April, and we decided in April to do 4 and 1/4% and 1.75, exactly like we did last year, that we still don't have a crystal ball, Commissioner. We still, in October of, or this time next year, we could fall into recession. So, you know, we all do the best we can with the data we have, we all see through a dark glass clearly, Commissioners, we really do. We do the best we can with what we have, and we monitor it very, very closely. And I can tell you, Michael and I monitor this closely. And so if there were to be a hiccup, or there would be, we were to stub our toe, or we would hit a speed bump, you would be the very first to know, because it would require, quite honestly, a course correction. In my mind, to be very clear, the course correction would never include, unless it was under the most dire of circumstances, which would be incalculable at this point, we would never pull back a raise. I would never advocate for that, period, end of discussion. That's why I appreciate Commissioner Beverly's compromised approach, because I think it's, it puts it on the table, it lets our employees know we're serious about addressing the number of issues as it relates to the pay table. And so I wish it weren't this premature, but I can support it because of the data that I've received from the state of Tennessee on the economic outlook. And so I'm as confident as I can be, knowing that we're this far out. So I hope that answers your question.
And I'm not going to cut off this discussion, but does anyone else have any comments or amendments?
Commissioner. Commissioner.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McAdoo.
I may have missed it, but I heard one budget and finance member said that they only had a week to discuss it, and then I'm just wondering, what was the vote in budget and finance on, on this issue?
Vote was 6 to 1, 6 in favor, 1 against.
That's what I remember as well, 6 to 1 in favor.
Mr. Chair.
Beverly.
I don't mean to wear out my welcome up here, but I do want to point out, this was proposed in Public Safety, and I want to commend Chairman Harris for bringing that up to budget and recognizing that this is, was an issue to speak of immediately, and that delaying it till February with potential implementation in March or April would not have helped the issue. And I'm, I see the mayor agrees with that, that we have to do something now. So I just want to, this is an option as a team to do something and get the ball rolling. We have an opportunity here, together, to move forward. And I'm really excited about what is on our horizons, on what we can explore. And I commend each and every one of you for taking part of this discussion, engaging with the thought, thoughtfulness, engaging in the debate as we go forward to take some sort of action in investing in our employees.
Mr. Chairman.
Oliver.
Relative to the information that Mayor Carr brought and the discussion with our finance director and our HR director, I'd like to amend the motion to support the 4.25% increase to the table.
I have a, I have a motion and a second to amend the resolution from 4 to 4 and 1/4%. Discussion on that amendment.
Two seconds.
Discussion on the amendment. Time will vote, vote on the amendment. What was the second?
We have to have the number passed for the clerks out there. Vote and give me like.
Do you remember this, this page that I was showing you? These are all going to have to be calculated, so you won't see all those tonight if there's this change that's made.
Take your time, Michael.
What I'm saying is, it's going to take him a while to calculate all these. I don't, I, I have something else to talk about, but it's not going to take but a moment. Actually, I'm going to call on him to comment on it too, so.
Do you need, do we need to take a recess or something?
I don't, but maybe you do. That's your recommendation?
Yeah, that's my recommendation.
Hold on, hold on. Hold on, you guys, hold on. Michael says he's close, give him another minute, okay? While we're giving that extra minute, I'd like to call your attention to my left and to your right. We've got a commissioner over here that's been under the weather for several weeks, and it is a pleasure to see Commissioner Boyd back amongst us tonight. And I know it's a chore for him to be here, but I'm glad he's here and participating in tonight's commission meeting. There's been a lot of people. There's been a lot of people praying for you and your family, and I think miracles happen. I believe in them 100%, and I think I might be looking at one right now. Glad you're here, partner.
Well, he is looking. I can say that our next regular scheduled budget meeting will be Thursday, January the 9th. And I'll go ahead and wish all of y'all a Merry Christmas. So I'll save those couple of comments. One other thing, and maybe I'll trickle this all out, Michael. I asked Sonya to give us a record of the pay increases that we have given our employees over the last several years. I asked her to put a hard copy in your mailbox. If you haven't got it yet, check, make sure you've got it. We can send you an electronic copy. It's probably already online where you can read it, too. Is that correct, Sonya? She hadn't put it online yet, but the reason I mentioned that, and the reason I asked her to do that, a lot of people, especially maybe our public safety people that are on the non-receiving end of this, thinks that we're ignoring them or haven't done anything about it. But if you read through that very carefully, I think you'll be pleasantly surprised at what we have been able to do as far as increasing our employees' pay over the years. Market adjustment is one of the things that we'll have to address.
I think Michael is ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, while we're looking at salary increases, we need to look at the benefits that we've done over the last several years. And I'm thinking of one right now. That was insurance. So we do give our employees a comfortable benefit package. Instead of just looking at raises and just bringing up raises, we need to bring it all up. We need to bring raises along with the benefits on each individual before we try to make a decision.
I just need to read this so we can, for the auditors, when we adjust all this, they don't ding us. I'll provide a fresh copy to the clerk down there tomorrow or Monday. But the difference in a 4%, a 4 and 1/4% is roughly $273,837. That would amend the general fund to a change of $1,904,985. It would amend Fund 118, our ambulance service fund, by $342,777. And it would amend the solid waste fund, 116, by $79,788.
Amount. We have a motion and a second to amend the 4% to 4 and 1/4%. Ready to vote? Okay, we're voting on the amendment. I think it's appropriate that we cast, we'd be on the board, so if you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Report the vote.
18 yes, 3 no.
Motion passes. We're back to the original motion as amended. Any further comments before we vote? We're back to the resolution to increase employee salaries to 4 and 1/4%, which is the amended motion. Ready? Board, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Report the vote.
19 yes, 2 no.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, now, the final thing I wanted to address, I was going to ask our Finance Director, Michael Smith, to comment on bond ratings and bond issuance.
As I mentioned earlier, we did get rated again this week. Both of the rating agencies reaffirmed our rating as AAA and AA+ with S&amp;P, so that's really good news. We do plan to sell the refunding bonds that was approved at, I believe it was last month's meeting. Plan to sell those next Tuesday will be the sale. Will close sometime the first week or so of January. As of right now, the bond market is holding steady, so we still anticipate those savings that we talked about at last month. But I thought it was good news that they did reaffirm our ratings, so.
Thank you, Mike.
Item L2, L2A, is the Public Safety Committee. I'll call on Chairman Pettis Reed.
Mr. Chairman, our meeting will be, it has been moved till next Wednesday evening at 5:30 here in this room. Just a reminder to everyone that on the 16th, on that evening, at New Vision Church at 7:00 PM, the Fire and Rescue will have their annual awards ceremony. Commissioners, if you have not attended one of those, you need to do so. It's quite impressive to see what these individuals have accomplished over the year. They've done quite a bit, and you'll see them receive awards for the different things they've done. Like to see you out there at 7 o'clock next Monday evening.
Thank you. Item L3, Health and Education Committee, Chairman Fieldod.
Thank you, Chairman. Our next meeting is this upcoming Tuesday, 5:30 PM in these chambers.
Item L4, Property Management Committee, Chairman Allen McAdoo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No report tonight, and our meeting will be December 17th. It'll be on a Tuesday night at 5:30 PM.
Thank you. Have something else?
I need to clarify a number I read earlier. I was going about as fast as I could go. The numbers I read you for each fund were correct. I stated that there was a difference between the 4 and a 4 and 1/4 was $273,000 approximately. That was for a full year. For the six months that the amendment, that would be right at $137,000 difference. Does she need to clarify that for the record, when somebody will replay this back to me and call me and go, hey, you were wrong? So I just want to replay it for the record. Sorry about that.
Set the record so state. Item L5, Public Works and Planning, Chairman Anthony Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do not have a report tonight, but our next meeting will be January 7th at 5:30. Wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Item L6, Steering Committee, Chairman Craig Harris. Oops.
May I interrupt, Mr. Chairman? Thank you for recognizing me. Commissioner Oliver acknowledged that there may be a purchasing meeting on Tuesday, 17th, and I just wanted to see if our secretary could help with that. We have a health and ed on the 17th.
Purchasing Committee will be at 4:30 and should be over with in plenty of time.
Very good. Thank you. I just wanted my board, my committee to hear that. Thanks, Hope.
Yes. Chairman Harris.
First of all, I didn't say anything during that. I wanted, I think our employees needed to have the raise. I think you did a good job tonight. When I brought this up, I didn't bring this up without counsel. I want to thank Johnson, Beverly. I want to thank Trey Gush, and I want to thank Robert P., and Michael, and Sonya. I have passions. My passions are opioids. Y'all know that. I ran on it. And there's people, Mike's sanitation, Piercey's sanitation, Beverly's public safety. But our number one thing we got to do is the safety of our citizens. And we're either bleeding, and I think that you answered the call, and I think we've done a good thing. So, sorry I had to get that out. This is, all this is, is fixing our handbook, and it is a, let me see if I can get this. Whereas a copy of the Rutherford County Drug-Free Workplace Policy is attached here, too, as Exhibit I, and incorporated herein by reference as it copied here by verbatim, now therefore being resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, is that the updated drug-free workplace policy, a copy of which is attached to Exhibit I, is hereby approved, resolved the 12th day of December 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second to update drug-free workplace policy. Questions or comments?
Question, please.
Yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner Oliver.
I have not read all of this. I was just wondering, can you maybe pinpoint what updates were made here as opposed to what was previously in place?
Chair, I'm going to refer that over to Nick.
And Sonya might want to come up, too.
Sonya, who are you referring it to?
The rules were suspended to recognize Sonya Stevenson a little bit earlier, and I'm going to say that they're still suspended for her. Come on up, Sonya.
Thank you. So the primary thing, when we took, when I took it through steering, we were wanting to add one of the drugs, the DOT. The federal government is looking at adding fentanyl to DOT and CDLs. So one of the things was to add that to the handbook, and that was approved. The other thing was, with the drugs that we test, there are cutoff in confirmation levels. And in the past, we've done a CDL look-alike for our employees, but our testing panel that we use, we can't get a CDL look-alike. As I've been told, they're having a hard time because everybody's anticipating this change, so they've started converting over. So the new cutoff in confirmations that were provided to me from our vendor that we used to do that, our drugs, excuse me, our MRO, and who does our random panels, and who reviews our drug-free policy, they can't get that panel anymore. So we've had to adjust the cutoffs and the confirmations since we put it through steering, so that's why we had to come back through. Welcome.
Other questions? Have a motion and a second to approve the amendment to our drug-free workplace policy. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Next meeting, January 6th. Anything else to come before the committee? We're about ready to go into executive session. We'll wait. Okay. Okay. No other business. The county commission will enter executive session, and I'll need to ask everyone to leave the room except attorneys, mayor, and me. Want to call the Rutherford County Commission back into order. We've just come back into order from an executive session with our attorneys, and we'll move on with our business. This time, we'll go into our normal shout-outs. Anyone have a particular item that you'd like to mention or shout out about?
I do. Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Oliver.
Thank you. I'd like to shout out Commissioner Phil Wilson for an excellent presentation that he did for the Laverne Board of Mayor and Alderman. It was just covering commission business and things that we've been doing, so he did a great job.
Thank you. Outstanding. Anything else? Any other shout-outs?
I would. Shout out Crumble Cookies for providing desserts over there for you guys. Also, Tink's Treats. And then I also would like to just do a little shout-out to the staff, those.
Thank you. Anything else? Anything else? Our next commission meeting will be January 16th. And also, just kind of remind everyone that January is the month that we file our ethics statements, so put that on your calendar and don't let that get by you. It's an important document to fulfill. Anything else? Anyone have anything else? Tonight has been a challenging meeting in ways, but an eventful meeting in ways that I'm extremely proud of. The debate that happened was meaningful and led us to a conclusion that I think was a consensus of this commission, and that's exactly what our job is. So thank you for your time, your attendance, your participation tonight. With that, I'd like to wish you a Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year. We're adjourned.